Good morning, everyone. This is Commissioner Steve Bradshaw. I have the honor of serving as Presiding Officer for the DeKalb County Board of Commissioners for this year. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole Meeting for April 7th, 2020. I want to thank all of our staff members for their diligence in getting us prepared to execute this Committee of the Whole Meeting this morning. I want to thank my colleagues on the Board of Commissioners for their forbearance, and I hope that all of your families and loved ones are doing well as we work our way through this crisis. Also, I want to thank our viewing and listening public for their patience as we continue to fine tune this process and try to provide you with the best experience possible. Without any further preamble, we'll go ahead and start to execute our agenda. The next item calls for committee reports from committee chairs. So, uh, I'll yield to whichever committee chair is ready to present their report for this morning.
I'll go.
All right, I think I heard Commissioner Larry Johnson. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Glad everybody could join us for this call. The Operations Committee had a full agenda. We focused on the census overview. As you know, we're in the midst of the census. We are, April 1st was the kickoff, and people received it early, of course. But now we're in the midst of trying to get our numbers up in the midst of COVID-19, which has hampered our outreach efforts, where we've shifted to, um, radio, um, Nextdoor, social media sites, and now we are at forty-four percent response rate. So just a little bit ahead of the state, which is about forty-two percent. And so if you all can, keep pressing folks to do it. We also had voter registration and elections to come, because you all know we've moved to, uh, the state had moved to absentee ballot process in terms of mailing to all residents of Georgia. And, uh, that process is moving forward. We wanted to know how it was going in DeKalb, and, uh, our director highlighted how we'll be doing it and also, um, helping us with that process. We also talked about PDK, uh, rental abatement program with Mario, the director. I'm waiting to get feedback from him. Of course, you all know that the, um, Payment Assistance Program that was passed in the Cares Act, uh, passed last week, and now bank starting to process, uh, small business loans for, uh, people, bank, uh, businesses who keep their employees on staff. And we had a few items, uh, front loader, uh, conventional trucks for our yard waste. Uh, we had trucks that are thirteen years old, and they have to be replaced regardless of where we are in this, uh, timeframe. I think it's about three years old, older than it's supposed to be. And our director sanitation outlined that whole process, and so we passed that on. Of course, uh, the last one I'll talk about is our cleaning. We did, um, sanitizing our buildings. We had to do an adjustment of about five hundred thousand dollars more, uh, to get our buildings clean because of what we're dealing with now, and so we approved that in operations as well. So that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, who would like to go next, please? I see Commissioner Gannon. Go ahead, Chair of the PEX Committee. I think you're still muted, Commissioner Gannon.
Okay, there we go. I'm sorry, the screen disappeared.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Uh, PEX met, and most of our items actually were taken care of at the last board meeting. So thank you very much. We've got a holdover that we'll be hearing because PEX meets today, and I think there's a number of items on this agenda that will be taken care of today. One of the things, though, that I did want to remind everyone of and that we will be emphasizing is working to try and finish that incentives package and IGA, um, related to economic development. And I'd also like to add to that process, having some discussions about what kinds of tools are available and that our economic development entity can be using as we start hearing, planning for recovery. That's the big topic that folks are talking about, and I don't know if we are geared up to address it. So, um, that's one of the issues we'll take up, but we certainly have to get the incentives package done. So our consultants have done their part, and they're working with our legal department, and we'll get a bit of a report today in PEX at one o'clock. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Gannon. Who would like to go next? I see committee, uh, I see Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson. I'll recognize her at this time.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Good morning again, everyone. I, I chair the Employee Relations Public Service Public Safety Committee, known as IRPS. My colleagues have sat on that committee with me is, uh, Commissioner, uh, Jeff Rader and Commissioner Nancy Jester. Our last meeting was held on Monday, uh, March the thirtieth, um, two thousand and twenty five. Well, when we discussed the purchasing, uh, when we, uh, discussed two purchasing items, and that was a change order, uh, to a contract for employee's assistance, um, co- cooperative agreement. This item was recommended for approval. Uh, we also discussed food path and well- wellness, uh, benefit, uh, effective July the first, two thousand and twenty. We also tabled the agenda dealing with the discussion of the Resolution Amendment to two thousand and twenty, um, DeKalb Budget. Uh, the, um, committee will meet again today at, uh, April the seventh, at two fifteen, where we have, uh, discussions on, uh, six purchasing items to be used by, uh, DeKalb Fire Rescue, uh, DeKalb County Human Resources, uh, DeKalb County Police Services. Thank you, and I yield back.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, I see Commissioner Davis, uh, Cochran Johnson, who recognizes the Chair of the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you so much, Presiding Officer. Of course, I'm Lorraine Cochran Johnson. I chair the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee. Sitting on that committee alongside me are Commissioners Gannon, as well as Commissioners Jester. Our last meeting was held on Monday, March thirtieth, um, at two PM via Zoom, and during that particular meeting, we heard a total of seven items. Those items totaled one million, five hundred fourteen dollars. Additionally, we had item number oh-three-eight-four, which was the acceptance of a three million dollar, um, GFO loan for the Seminole Road Phase Three Unit Cell Construction. Um, we also had item oh-three-oh-one, which is a real estate transaction between DeKalb County and D.R. Horton Real Estate in the amount of four hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars. And we also had item oh-two-oh-five, was a change in scope only, um, from money that had previously been allocated. All, um, items were approved, all seven items unanimously during committee. In addition to hearing, um, those seven items, we also received an update on the Snap Finger Waste Water Treatment Plant Expansion Project, uh, which is very important, of course, to DeKalb County. The cost of the project is one hundred thirty-seven million, one hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred thirty dollars and thirty-seven cents, and we are at seventy-two percent of cost completion at this point. Um, we have a projected completion date for Snap Finger Waste Water Treatment Plant of May, twenty twenty-two. Um, of course, the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee does meet today. Um, I urge all to join. And anyone who would like a copy of that report, I do have it available. And, uh, thank you so much, and I yield my time back, um, to the Chair Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. That takes us to the Chair of the Fab Committee, Commissioner Jester.
Thank you. Um, so we met, uh, last week, and we will be meeting again, um, in the Finance On It Budget Committee next week. So I don't have that agenda finalized yet. We discussed items that we then, um, voted on, some of which we voted on in our last meeting. The main thing was the, um, to go forward with the Grady Bonds for their Surgery Center, and, um, so we've, uh, and, and the board, full board approved that at our last meeting. We're still discussing the purchasing ordinance, uh, in more detail, and that will be back on our agenda. And we're asking for revenue expectations, um, so that we can forecast what any of this current crisis is doing, um, for our financial situation. So, um, please join us next week. There will be other things on our agenda as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Jester. Before we proceed, any other comments from any other, uh, commission members at this point? Seeing none, then this, this item will proceed to the next item, which is review of the proposed executive agenda. So I'll yield to our Chief Operating Officer and Executive Assistant, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer and members of the board.
Can I ask a question before we start?
By all means.
And it's up, Mr. Williams. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to know, I, we've got a pretty hefty agenda, and I was wondering if the administration has a process to determine high priority items? And the reason I ask that is because, you know, I'm going to a lot of other meetings, and we're all talking about how to conserve our budget. And we've got, uh, a large number of items, and we're going through our budget, and I want to make sure that we have some way of prioritizing these items before they come to us in case there are possibilities of conserving funds that we will need to can, to have our budgets stay, um, in limits through the rest of this crisis. So I'm just wondering what that process entails before we start going through these items? If you can indulge me, please.
Absolutely. So, um, Commissioner, each item, uh, I personally review, and will talk with the departments, and in many instances, there is a, you know, for lack of a better word, a negotiation if, um, we feel or I feel that there may be an opportunity for cost reduction. As you recall, last, uh, meeting, there were a number of items that were in sanitation and maybe other major capital purchases, wherein we had looked, or I had looked to reduce, um, the amount or the cost. And just part of the justification process is ensuring that whatever we're going to spend is what we absolutely have to spend. So we're, um, we've traditionally been fiscally conservative, but we have definitely put more, um, emphasis on that. And there'll, there'll be an item actually you'll see on the agenda that I'll, I'll raise that issue, where we have significantly reduced the cost, but tried to get all the quality, uh, that's possible out of the, uh, out of the spend. So, uh, that, the issue that you raised is definitely front of mind.
Thank you. So appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner Gannon. Uh, did I see Commissioner Davis Johnson, uh, had signified or raised hand?
Yeah, you, you did, but, uh, uh, I think that, uh, Mr. Williams covered my question.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you. Any other comments from co- committee commissioners at this time? Seeing none, I'll ask the, uh, exactly to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. The very first item, um, on the proposed preliminary agenda, item zero-three-eight-eight is the two thousand and twenty CDBG Youth Set Aside Fund for Summer Voucher Program. That's one hundred thousand dollars. It's to assist in, um, paying for, uh, or providing scholarships for summer camp for, uh, youth.
What is, what is board's pleasure?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to see that in PEX, please.
Okay, preliminary with a stop in PEX. Continue, Mr. Williams.
Next, the next item.
Go ahead.
The next item, zero-three-nine-seven, authorization of the reallocation of seven million dollars derived from the sale of Clark Harrison Building to the renovations at the one-seventy-eight Sam Street Buildings, one and two. So this item, uh, two things. One, we're going to offer a substitute because although we put the language sale of the Clark Harrison Building, if you will recall, approximately, I want to say two years ago, the board, um, actually used the funds to, um, uh, purchase a number of vehicles. So we will clean up this language, but, uh, the underlying point, and it really speaks to what Commissioner Gannon, uh, had asked, this number was significantly higher, um, when these discussions started, but we feel that we are able to, uh, with seven million dollars, um, accomplish all that we need to and have a high-quality, um, space in buildings that we currently own. With that, we would have approximately four million dollars, a little more, uh, remaining in that, uh, capital account that could be used for something else. But, so this, this is an example of what you talked about, Commissioner Gannon.
Okay.
Followed, followed by three GIS items.
Hang on, hang on. Let's, we haven't made a determination of where this falls, so, uh, is this, uh, Ops?
Yes.
Stop in Ops?
Typically gone.
All right, Ops Committee. All right. Continue, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, sir. Followed by three GIS Department items. These are resolutions authorizing the sale of unredemed and unforeclosed interest. Uh, one in a property at two-six-eight-seven Flat Shoals Road, one in a property at four-eight-four-three Rondel Lake Court in Lythonia. The first one's in Decatur, and the other one is at seven-one-four-two South Goddard Road in Lythonia.
We'll see those in PEX today.
All of those are in PEX.
Thank you.
All right. Continue, please.
Followed by a transfer of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the General Fund to the Senior Citizens Grant Fund. This is an item, this is, uh, something that we do on an annual basis.
This could be consent, consent.
All right, that's fine. Would, uh, just help me understand what the Senior Citizens Grant Fund is. I'm not familiar with that.
No, you want to explain it, Zach?
Yes, what we typically do, this transfer, uh, will pre- prevent the delay in payment for these services to subcontractors. What we do is each year, the board will allocate funds, um, to assist in providing senior services, you know, through our, uh, Human Services Department. So that's what these funds, uh, essentially do.
Okay.
We approve this in the budget process, and it goes in with the ARC money.
Okay.
So it's already been approved.
Suggested, without objection, consent. Continue, please.
The following items are police services, uh, grant acceptance fiscal year twenty, high-intensity drug trafficking area grant, uh, for two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Followed by, followed by a gr-
Hang on. Okay, uh.
I'd say consent. I've read through it.
Okay, consent. I don't hear any objections. Consent. Continue.
Followed by item zero-three-three-zero, uh, the grant acceptance for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Emergency Management Performance Grant, uh, Program Grant, and this is for emergency managed activities.
All right, consent?
Yes.
No objection, consent. Can you please?
The next item, uh, Public Works Transportation, uh, it's a relocate, relocation cost, uh, Georgia Power relocation cost for Briar Creek Road Sidewalk.
Consent?
No, well, go ahead.
It's only a thousand dollars. It's a thousand dollars.
No, actually, hold on. Um, we've had the conversation going, I mean, it's on the agenda today, so go ahead and send PWI in case there's any questions.
All right.
PWI.
Stop this PWI this afternoon. Okay.
The purchasing contracting items.
Let's, let's pause. What, what I want to do at this point.
We got some feedback going.
Okay, I think, I think it stopped. Okay, for the purchasing items, I'll just have the respective committee chairs review the items in each of their respective areas and, uh, give me the thumbs up if you're okay with what's presented so far.
Yeah, I've reviewed, uh, IRPS, and I'm fine with, um, the ten items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. IRPS are good. Fab.
I have one, and I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ops?
I'm fine with that, Mr. Presiding Officer. Bring it on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. PWI.
I'm mute, madam.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson, you're still on mute?
Oh, I'm sorry. I am. Um, yes, I'm fine with these items. Let's go ahead and send those to me.
Very good. Thank you very much. Continue, Mr. Williams.
Yes, Mr. Presiding Officer, that concludes my portion of the agenda.
Okay. At this point, is there, are there any other items to add to our agenda today? Right now, I'm seeing none. Thank you all. Then I'll have, uh, John Manson. I'm sorry. Commissioner Davis Johnson, if you want to say anything. Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we'll have, uh, John Manson from the Central Staff take us through the review, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
The first item we have is item two thousand and twenty zero-three-eight-eight, uh, and that's preliminary with a stop in PEX today.
Okay, continue.
The next item is two thousand and twenty zero-three-nine-seven, and that's preliminary with a stop in Ops with a substitute forthcoming.
Okay.
Uh, next we have two thousand and twenty zero-one-four-six, uh, two thousand and twenty zero-one-four-seven, two thousand and twenty zero-three-zero-three, all preliminary with a stop in PEX.
Okay.
Next we have two thousand and twenty zero-three-eight-nine. That's going to be consent. Uh, two thousand and twenty zero-three-two-one, two thousand and twenty zero-three-three-zero, both consent. Uh, two thousand and twenty zero-three-three-seven, preliminary with a stop in PWI today. Um, two thousand and twenty zero-two-six-six, two thousand and twenty zero-two-eight-three, two thousand and twenty zero-three-four-six, two thousand and twenty zero-three-six-five, and two thousand and twenty zero-three-eight-one are all preliminary with a stop in IRPS. Uh, two thousand and twenty zero-three-two-seven is preliminary with a stop in Fab. Uh, two thousand and twenty zero-two-eight-five, two thousand and twenty zero-three-five-two, two thousand and twenty zero-three-five-three, and two thousand and twenty zero-three-seven-four are all preliminary with a stop in Ops. Uh, two thousand and twenty zero-zero-six-five, two thousand and twenty zero-five-nine-zero-one-nine-zero-one-five-nine, two thousand and twenty zero-two-five-six, two thousand and twenty zero-two-seven-zero, two thousand and twenty zero-three-zero-nine, and two thousand and twenty zero-three-two-two are all preliminary with a stop in PWI. Um, and Commissioners, what is your pleasure on item two thousand and twenty zero-four-one-three?
There are no objections. I'd say consent for the minutes.
Item two thousand and twenty zero-four-one-four, approval of the amended minutes of the regular meeting of November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
And yet, just to pause, may I ask the clerk, what, what's the amendment of the minutes? Is Ms. Sanders?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead. Can just, just-
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The amendment is an, uh, motion that was made, and we needed to correct it, and we did that on these minutes and placed them back on.
Okay. All right. Thank you. There's no objection. Consent.
Uh, item two thousand and twenty zero-four-one-one, approval of the minutes of the special call meeting of March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
There's no objection. Consent.
And finally, two thousand and twenty zero-three-seven-eight, approval to accept the Violence Against Women Act, uh, FY twenty Grant Award from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for the Solicitor General's Victim Witness Assistance Program.
Okay, and do we know how much that, uh, grant is for?
We don't know right now, sir.
I, I believe.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I believe Samia is on the line, and she can give a little background.
Okay, by all means. Yes.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, the grant is for fifty thousand. And we have a match for that grant that comes out of, um, our operating budget for one thousand, six hun- I'm sorry, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. A total, we have sixty-seven thousand for that grant, and that is just to have one of our employee, um, attorneys that deals with our domestic violence cases.
All very good. Thanks for that update. Any questions for Ms. Fields?
I'm fine with that being on consent.
Okay. All right. Without objection, consent. Anything further, Mr. Manson?
No, sir, that's all I have.
Anything further, Mr. Williams?
No, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Colleagues on this Board of Commissioners, anything further to add?
Get a question?
Yes, by all means. Question, Larry Johnson?
Yeah, uh, you want to make a motion going special call? Or are we doing an executive session or no?
Uh, as I understand it from the county attorney, we don't need an executive session today. Is that is, am I correct in that statement, Madam County Attorney?
I thought we had a time-sensitive issue.
Well, we'll, we'll see if she'll, uh-
I do not have an executive session scheduled for today.
Okay.
Okay, good day.
County Attorney, Commissioner-
I've got a question.
Yes, Commissioner, hang on. Commissioner Larry Johnson, were you, were you finished? Did you get your question answered? Good. Okay, Commissioner Gannon.
Yes, um, two things, just in terms of updates to, um, keep us informed. One is, um, there's been a lot of stuff in the news about how our infrastructure projects are continuing throughout the county and through, not our county, but, um, throughout the state and various other places. And this might be a good time for us to get a update from our SPOLOST, um, group to let us know what kind of infrastructure projects are continuing, how many crews we have out in various places, um, and what we're accomplishing, because of course, those are jobs that, um, people are able to, um, continue in with certain, um, you know, precautions. So, um, if possible, could we get a SPOLOST update that's, you know, more in line with who's out there, what they're doing, what we've accomplished, and then, you know, what's on board in the pipeline?
Okay.
How meeting?
That's a good point. So, uh, I think, uh, our regular scheduled, uh, SPOLOST update is, uh, the fourth Thursday of this month. Are you looking to do something before that, Commissioner Gannon?
No, no, that, we can wait. I was just thinking, we had, seem to have, um, an ability at these meetings for, um, you know, something that's a little more open, but we can wait till the fourth Thursday if you, if the board so desires.
Okay, all right.
That would be the twenty-third?
Yeah, I think that's right. Yeah, because we run every other month on our SPOLOST updates, so.
All right. So if we, but, um, those are often used to make decisions about where we're going. So maybe it would be helpful before that meeting to have this kind of, uh, a background. This is what we've been doing now. And this is the kind of infrastructure jobs that we're keeping going during this crisis, and have a look at it from that perspective before we get into deciding what's next.
Okay, if, if you like, we can have them do a brief update at our next Cal meeting, which is the twenty-first, which is a couple of days prior to the, uh, to the, let's call it the big SPOLOST update.
The big SPOLOST, right.
Will that work for you?
That would be great.
All right, let's try to do that, then.
Thank you.
I'll make a notation of that.
Mr. Presiding Officer?
Yes, sir.
To the Commissioner, if you like, and we had a great meeting yesterday with the SPOLOST team. And the first thing to assure everyone is that our projects continue to move.
Good, that's the kind of thing I'm really interested in.
Right, absolutely. So we're continuing to move forward with our projects. We'll pro- provide a written update, uh, before the twenty-third. Happy to go through it at the, the next Cal meeting, and then that will, uh, help fuel conversation for the Thursday SPOLOST meeting.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner Gannon?
No, not for now.
Go. All right. Anything further from any other members of this Board of Commissioners today? Right now, I'm seeing none, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Second?
It's been moved. It's been properly seconded. All those in favor, let's just call the roll. Commissioner Jester?
Aye.
Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. As of now, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much for your time and attention. Have a wonderful day.
You too.